You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the Sand Hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown Fayetteville.
We'll call the January 9, 2012 FIBO City Council Meeting to order. Thank everyone for being here this evening. And we ask that you stand for invocation led tonight by Pastor Terry Austin. And then if you remain standing for a pledge of allegiance led by these young brave Americans from Troop 771, they're from the Special Forces Association at Fort Bragg. Pastor?
Let us pray. Our Father and I, God, we thank thee for our gathering in this city council meeting tonight. And Father, we invoke your divine presence here and we give you praise, glory, and honor to your name. We ask, God, that you forgive us of our sins and all of our broken vows and all of our shortcomings. And Father, we pray for this council tonight, God, that they will make those appropriate decisions that's betterment for this community. Father, give them wisdom and give us all understanding. God, we may do those things, God, that's right by this community. We thank you for it in advance and we give your name glory, honor, and praise. Continue, God, to bless them and keep them and strengthen them and encourage their hearts. And we do this and we ask in your Father and your Son, Jesus' name, amen and amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That's Troop 776. Thank you guys for being here. Many of them are working on some achievements there, so hopefully going to stay some tonight and watch the proceedings. So, thank you all for being here and thanks for your commitment to scouting. Okay, we'll move now to approval of the agenda. Ms. Applewhite?
Mayor, I wanted to ask council if they had an interest in modifying the agenda to add for discussion an item for public forum for discussion of the proposed moratorium on consent searches. I think, Madam Attorney, do we take a vote on that now to possibly add that to?
I think you have to get a second and then we take a vote. Yes, ma'am. Is there a second to Ms. Applewhite's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Have a first and an appropriate second. Any discussion of the motion? Everybody clear on that? Let me ask for your vote, please. Okay, that motion does not carry those in favor of the motion. Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Hare, Mr. Massey, Mr. Fowler. In opposition, Mr. Chris, Mr. Bates, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shavani, Mr. Arp, and Ms. Davy. Is there another motion concerning tonight's agenda? Mr. Bates?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
No, this would be the regular agenda, sir.
A motion to approve the regular agenda.
All right, is there a second to that? Thank you, Mr. Massey. Any discussion on that one?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to move, I'd like for us to pull item 7.5.
That will be when we get to consent. So, we're just approving the overall agenda tonight. This is item 4.0, we have a motion to approve the agenda appropriately second by Mr. Massey. Let me ask for your vote on that motion, please. Okay, that's approved. Several important announcements and recognition tonight. Mr. Omen?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'd like to take a moment this evening to introduce two City of Fayetteville employees who I think best epitomize the spirit of service to our community. Not only do they contribute on a daily basis in their roles here at the city, but they also have taken on the additional responsibility of chairing the United Way and American Heart Association fundraising campaigns. Both campaigns have been very successful under their leadership. First, I'd like for Kelly Nykot to come forward. Kelly is a senior financial analyst with the City of Fayetteville for almost four years now, and she has chaired our United Way fundraising efforts for the past two years. Kelly has been a United Way donor for the past 17 years and has participated in 15 United Days of Caring. This time, I'd like to present Kelly with a plaque before she gives a report on the success of our campaign. The plaque reads, "To Kelly B. Nykot, 2011 United Way Employee Campaign Manager for your outstanding leadership and exceptional volunteerism." Kelly?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was honored to serve as the employee campaign manager for the annual United Way campaign for the second year, and I'm very excited to report that the city raised $82,848.61. That is 10 and 1/2 percent more than our goal of $75,000 and 23.8 percent more than the 2010 campaign total. This was done through payroll contributions by our employees, one-time donations, and also several successful department fundraisers. These included things such as the dunking booth, which many of you are familiar with, our holiday craft fair and silent night auction, and our first ever Run United 5K, which we hope will become an annual event. The money raised during this campaign will make a big difference in our community as every dollar stays in Cumberland County. We're truly grateful for the generosity and support of our employees, and I'm thankful for this opportunity to serve this worthy cause. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you again, Kelly. Next, I'd like to introduce Keisha Parker. Keisha is our real estate manager with five years with the city, and Keisha has chaired the American Heart Association campaign, volunteered to do so for the last three years, and I didn't twist her arm too much. Keisha? To Keisha N. Parker, 2011 American Heart Association Employee Campaign Manager for your outstanding leadership and exceptional volunteerism.
Thanks.
Good evening.
The money raised for the American Heart Association is used to perform research and help educate the community by providing CPR training, health seminars, and other measures to help with preventive care on cardiovascular disease, which we all know is the number one killer of Americans. This year has been the first year that the city has exceeded their goal. Our projected goal was $5,000, and we raised a total of $5,260.62. We also earned the city an award for being the 2011 Sand Hills Heart Walk top company. We actually placed third on that. Now, our fundraising efforts are merely from fundraisers. We do bake sales, things such as that within City Hall. We don't get to do the payroll deduction. But we actually have very good participation and we had a very successful campaign this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Keisha. We have some special guests with us tonight. Councilman Hurst is going to introduce them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If the Terry Sanford Senior High School's AP Government class would stand with teacher Kevin Height and Principal David Hagerty at the back, if y'all stand as I read this special recognition to you, and I appreciate y'all being next door neighbor to me, and I was a graduate in 1972.
Make careful.
Over the past 12 years, Mr. Height's AP Government students have been required to complete a number of political service hours. The purpose of this requirement is to actively engage students in the political process so they can better understand the hard work it takes to run for office. It also helps them establish contacts with leaders across the community as well as the state of North Carolina. Now, this year's class completed over 350 hours, and it wasn't all in my campaign, collectively in the Fayetteville and Hope Mills municipal elections. They also helped organize a candidate's night at Terry Sanford on November 2, which was excellent, by the way. And now we know why in 2010 Terry Sanford was named a School of Excellence for Civic Engagement and Learning by the Center for the Civic Mission of Schools, and only 11 schools in the United States received this designation and this distinction. Outstanding. Congratulations and great work.
Go Bulldogs. Ms. Davy, do you have some information tonight?
Yes. Jobs and contract opportunities. The Hope 6 Project is starting their construction here in early 2012. The B.J.L. Construction Company in partnership with T.C.G. United Developers and the Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing Authority is hosting a job fair to match Section 3 job applicants and contractors with opportunities relating to the next three Fayetteville Hope 6 projects. This job fair will take place this Thursday, January 12, at 6:00 p.m. The location is Friendship Baptist Church, which is 400 Campbell Avenue. If you have any questions, please contact William A. Lacy at 910-988-1707.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hare?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I would like to, and I'm proud and honored to be making an announcement speaking about our MLK Week, MLK Weekend. We want to continue to carry on the work that was going forward by our late Ms. Lula Crenshaw. I'm happy to announce that there will be this year a candlelight visual that's going to be on Thursday, January 12. It's going to start at 5:45 at 739 Blue Street. That's at MLK Park. And last year, we went without a parade, and I'm happy to announce that there will be a MLK parade this year. It will start, it will be on January 14. It will start at 11:30 a.m., and it will start at the courthouse on Person Street and portrayed from there down Hay Street, and I think it might end at Blue Street. Correct? So, thank you, Mayor.
I don't think they're going quite that far.
It's not going that far. Then if that's the case, it's going to start at the courthouse and end on Hay Street. And that is going to be the 14th of January, starting at 11:30. So, everyone, please come out and enjoy the parade. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Massey?
I just wanted to clarify on that contact person for the Hope 6 piece, that was Wilson Lacy. That's going to be your contact person there.
Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else? Okay, we'll now move to the public forum. Let me give the details of that. As you know, it's designed to invite citizen input and discussion. The forum shall last no longer than 15 minutes, and each speaker will have up to two minutes to address the council on issues related to the City of Fayetteville. If you're interested in speaking on an item that's designated as a public hearing, and we do have one of those later tonight, we ask that you reserve your comments until that public hearing. When you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, that means there's approximately 30 seconds left of the two minutes. When your name's called, we ask that you come to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our first speaker is Ms. Denise Williams.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams, you come up here and speak. Yes, ma'am. Just come right up into this microphone and you'll give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Denise Williams, and my address is 636 Volunteer Drive. Actually, I just recently moved there, and I used to live at, I was just recently over in 1907, Apartment H, Tokay. How are we supposed to conduct this? Are we just tell what we're here for and what we're concerned about in the community? Okay, well, I'm concerned about, well, I came here for PWC. I just, I just don't like the way things have been run with PWC concerning our bills and how we pay them. Actually, just recently, just recently, they started, they did a, this late payment type of thing, which was originally $10, and then it went down to $5. That I didn't, didn't like. And then when I, when I was talking to them about it, went down there to talk to them about it, they said something about the commissioner, whoever the commissioner is, has did this, but I still don't quite understand why. And another thing I'd like to address too also is the fact that we have to pay the light bills. Like, they said something about the meter reader reads the light, is my time up? Oh, okay. The meter reader reads the, reads the, the bill, reads the, reads the meter. I guess whenever, whenever the reader reads it, then that's the time that, whatever day they read it on, that's the, that's the day that we will be billed on. And to me, that just doesn't seem quite right, because what does a meter reader have to do with you paying your bill? You know what I'm saying? I don't get that part either. And I just feel like it's been some kind of rate increase or something where we just don't know anything about it. And people really don't have that kind of money to be paying PWC and stuff. I think people are pretty much honest here in Fayetteville. They should, you know, be allowed to, to say, "I can pay my bill on a certain day." And, and if they're, if they've been paying it on time, they should be able to say, "Well, let me pay it on that, that day," instead of just PWC having all the control. It's just like they have all the control. That's one of my concerns, but I can't think of everything right now, so.
That's good, ma'am. Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
So, our next speaker is Mr. Roosevelt Oden.
Hello, everyone, all of you on the council.
Evening.
I just wanted to let you know regarding deaf people here in Cumberland and surrounding counties and in Rockland County. And they've asked me to postpone remarks that I intended to make tonight to do that at a later meeting. I'm going to be speaking about, in support of the deaf community in this county and in the surrounding counties. But also, I wanted just to let you know that there's going to be a workshop. It's going to be on January 18, and I would ask all of you to come and report of that. A gentleman by the name of Jeff Greer is going to kind of present about deaf culture. And he presented last year and it was really wonderful. So, anyone who was there would remember that. But it's, that's the Fayetteville, Cumberland County Disability Council on Disability Issues. Oh, I just wanted to clarify, the sign for Fayetteville looks like the sign for french fry. And so, some of the things that could be addressed in that workshop, you know, so some of the interesting things about sign language and deaf culture. So, but I wanted to let you know that presentation is going to be next Wednesday.
Location?
Location.
It's going to be at the Recreation Center near FDCC.
Tokay.
Yes, that's right. That's the one. All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, sir.
So, our next speaker is Mr. Jim Nance.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council. Appreciate your letting me come tonight. Appreciate your letting me come tonight. I'm here not as a lawyer, but as a citizen and a businessman. I live at 6518 Stone Mountain Farm Road here in Fayetteville. My purpose tonight is to ask you to take a more intentional and proactive approach towards Fayetteville's homelessness. We have a substantial homelessness problem. Whereas they don't vote, they still affect our citizens, our businesses, and our safety I believe as a city that you're under a HUD mandate to come up with a plan for homelessness. Seven years have gone by, and I cannot tell that we're any closer to a plan than we were in the beginning. This is particularly true when we're faced with emergencies. This year alone, we have encountered tornadoes, threatened hurricanes, and temperatures that range from over 100 to in the teens. We have a number of groups that attempt to provide for some need, but when an emergency occurs, this amounts to a Band-Aid on a large wound. Take the recent dip in the temperature recently. Yet, there was insufficient shelter to provide for hundreds of people. The Salvation Army had opened, had refused to open their gym where they have cots and resources to allow a larger group to escape the cold. I feel like planning is useless if there's no implementation. Other cities have white flag policies in case of emergency. Organizations and shelters put out a white flag to let people know where a shelter would be. They get the word out. They send the public transportation to pick them up and make sure they get there. The problem, as I see it, is that there's no one group or person or entity that is in charge. And I believe that you have the ability to assign someone, appoint a commission, appoint a group who can bring these resources together so that homelessness can be effectively handled during emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nance. Thank you for coming, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is retired Colonel Chet Ahomi.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thanks for all what you do. Appreciate it. I'm Chet Ahomi, 2105 Pinewood Terrace. And what I talk about tonight is you're coming up on a vote on the ramp, and I strongly support it and hope you will too. I'm in my 29th year in property management after 30 years in the service, so I know pretty well Fayetteville and the different areas of concern. I've been working with Mr. Hewitt since August of 2007 on some type of program, and I sincerely appreciate his efforts in all these years. We, we need a program, and ramp is a good beginning. We waited this long, and I think with a few glitches in the ordinance that can be changed, that maybe a six-month trial period would be beneficial to all stakeholders concerned and also to the city staff. It's a learning exercise for all of us, and we do have some objections by some of our property managers and some of our owners. But I think working all together, we can do a good program for Fayetteville. The main concerns are the addresses on tax records. Right now, if an inspector writes up a unit, and the address is the address of that unit as the owner, he never had it changed, the letter goes to the unit and the tenant trashes it. And we don't find out about it for maybe 10 or days or 30 days later. The other thing, I'm a little concerned with city ordinance violations. I myself, with all the properties we have, can be three violations a year when we have an individual that's deployed and do not keep their properties up, and we don't know about it. I am going, have been, and will continue to put decals on all our rentals in the city of Fayetteville. And inspectors will call us and give us a chance to take care of the problem prior to initiating all the paperwork. And my last thing is I hope that you all select a highly qualified review board and individuals that are, have been in rental management or are very concerned with rentals and at least have the board appointed by the 1st of May so that they can come up with their procedures. Thank you very much. God bless Fayetteville.
Thank you, Mr. Nance. Thank you for coming, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Mary Jo Anderson.
Ms. Anderson, she must not be here, ma'am.
Okay. Our sixth speaker is Mr. Aronimi Mohammed Smith.
With the name of God, the beneficent, the merciful, I hope I'm not the sixth speaker. Should be the seventh or the fifth. I am Imam Aronimi Mohammed, a Vietnam vet, and you can reach me at 2700 Merkison Road. You can call me 910-286-4544. I bring you the greetings as a veteran and as a advocate for human rights issues. The issue of the homeless is absolutely critical at this point. Different people are sending people to me to help them get in apartments, and people are getting my name, saying, "Ms. Mohammed, I live on that bridge there on Grove Street." That problem has got to be dealt with, and we've got to help those people immediately. Otherwise, the city's funds and the county's funds will be cut. We also like to mention that I bring you the greetings from Attorney Jules Chambers of Charlotte, North Carolina, the former National NAACP president. I bring the greetings to you from him, as well as my school, Fayetteville State University. The idea that a police chief who is African-American descent, time has arrived. We had our first African-American mayor a few years ago. Now is the time to get a black police chief African-American. Those of you who know me well, we've been involved in this process, the mayor, et cetera, including the fire chief, for 25 years at least. We're also involved in helping to develop the economy at Fort Bragg, as well as throughout the city. On Wilmington Road, there's 700 new apartments. That's part of my work, and we are very, very proud of that. Lastly, the Masjid Omar Ibn Sa'id on Merkison Road, which is the first built by African-Americans in the state of North Carolina as Muslims. We have in a program, you all invited, February 18th at 6:00 P.M. And we will have a drama skit about the life of Omar Ibn Sa'id, who was a scholar when he was put into slavery in the United States of America, studied 29 years in Africa, and he was brought to Fayetteville as a slave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
So, our final speaker is Mr. Anthony Castillo.
Happy New Year, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Fayetteville. My name is Anthony Castillo. I live at 1804 Waterfall Way, which is in Spring Lake, North Carolina. I used to live here in Fayetteville not long ago. First, I want to say thank you to the police chief, and thank you to the assistant manager, Doug Hewitt, and Chief Bergermeier, which I think did a great job since I've been living here in Fayetteville. You know, I've never seen anything that I dislike with either, either one of them. I'm sorry to see them leave. Doug Hewitt for the rent program, which I think is badly needed in this city, where landlords are held accountable to the type of tenants they rent to. I mean, everybody should get a second or third chance, but if people continue to break the law, to turn their homes into drug dens or prostitution places or places of gambling and drinking, then the neighbors shouldn't have to put up with that, and they should have some support from city government in order to correct those issues. And I'm also calling on the people of Fayetteville to police their neighborhoods. I mean, the police, the city government, they can't do it by themselves. And I would hate to say it, I'm ashamed of our citizens who sit back and complain and not part of the solution. You know, it's time that the people who live here in this great city of Fayetteville, that they participate in their government, come down to these meetings and be part of solution and stop complaining. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming.
So, that concludes all of our speakers for the public forum.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate everyone coming tonight. We'll move now to Item 7.0, which is tonight's consent agenda. Mr. Arp.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Let me try this again. I would make a, I would move to pull Item 7.5, recommendation to reject all proposals for outsourcing of environmental services, waste collection, from the consent agenda tonight.
And approve the rest.
And approve the rest.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. We'll move into approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7.5. Let me ask for your vote on that, please. That's unanimous, and we'll move now to Item 7.5.
Yes, sir. In looking at Item 7.5 and the discussion that we had last week, the proposed pulling or the proposed recommendation of rejection, I don't think meets the intent of what we were looking at as a council. I would suggest that we go back and take the information that we have and, and make sure that the RFP is in line with what the council was looking for. Specifically, that it's an apples-to-apples comparison between the city services and, and the services offered by the public vendors. One of the questions that I was asked is, was this a sealed bid process? And if so, was the city's bid sealed as well?
Okay. We need to, we need to get a motion and a second, then we can kind of discuss that. So, what?
So, I would, I would make a motion that we, that we, that the staff go back and revisit the issue and make sure that we're doing a competitive analysis of these services for the city. The city versus a private vendor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second now. Discussion, Mr. Arp, go ahead, sir.
Okay. And as I was saying in the, in my discussion, you know, the key thing is, in fairness of competition, we have to make sure that we've allowed a, an apples-to-apples comparison. As you go through and you, and as I did some research this weekend, and, and we look at the, the information that was provided, I'm not sure that in the city's response that we provided the total cost. Some, some questions that I would ask is, did we include the cost of environmental services, personnel, benefits to include pensions? Was the cost inclusive of the, the maintenance on the vehicles, the PWC cost of the maintenance of the vehicles? And did the city provide a sealed bid as well, just like the vendors were asked to do? And was it turned in at the same time the vendors were, were turned in? So, it was a fair competition. So, those were just some things that I, I looked at this weekend that, that I'm concerned about. One other thing, too, I noticed in the city manager's notes, is that during a time period of 12 December through the 23rd of December, incoming, outgoing calls, Solid Waste received 963 calls. The closest, the closest other issue was 70 calls, and that was questions or transfers to other departments. And so, the thing that I'm concerned about is, our customer is the, is the citizen. And, and we have an ongoing issue, you know, with trash pickup in the city. And, and for some of us who have had the experience of having privatized trash pickup, we know the quality can be very good. We know the cost can be very reasonable, and we think this is the time that the city ought to take a hard look at this and see if we can't find a way to implement at least a, a segment of the city to see if this can be cost beneficial.
Okay. Other comments? Hearing none? Everybody clear on the motion? Okay. Let me ask for your vote on the motion, please. Well, that's unanimous. Thank you very much, council. Okay. We'll move now to Item 8, which is tonight's public hearing. Let me redo the directions on the public hearings. First of all, each side will have a total of 15 minutes to present your position, whether you are for or against. Individual speakers will have one time to speak and will be limited to three minutes each until, unless by previous arrangement, a single spokesman is designated, in which case the spokesman may use the entire 15 minutes. When you hear the beep and see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, that means there's approximately 30 seconds left. We ask that when your name's called, you come to the podium and state your name and address loudly for the record. And I believe this is a quasi judicial, so we didn't, we need to swear everyone in tonight, Madam Clerk? Everyone need to be sworn in for this one?
I only have one speaker.
They don't need to be? Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll begin with a staff presentation, I guess. David Nash, thank you, sir. Thanks for coming.
Mayor and members of council. Tonight, your one public hearing is concerning annexation. It is for an area referred to as Fairfield Farms, Section 4, 5, and 6. This petition requests annexation of an area on the northern side of the city that has been developing since the mid-'90s, referred to as Fairfield Farms. This is simply three more sections of that on the backside. It was submitted by Don Broadwell of Brolanco Corporation. The notice of public hearing was advertised on December 29th, as required by law. The area is currently vacant, about 54 acres. Brolanco proposes to develop it into 108 new single-family homes that will match the Fairfield Farm area. On this map here, the area requested for annexation is shown in green. As you can see, it's west of Ramsey Street, south of McCloskey Road, north of Andrews Road. The Pine Forest High School is up along Andrews Road nearby. This is an aerial photo of the area showing you that the area, much of the area's already been developed as Fairfield Farms. The area with the yellow dash line indicates your petition area here tonight, and it's showing that it's vacant. Here's the entrance to Fairfield Farms off of Ramsey Street, the western side, across from Greystone Farms. This shot shows you the area basically behind that moving machine that will be annexed and, well, it's up for annexation. It will be developed in the future. And then another shot of the area. It's currently vacant. Why was the petition submitted? Well, you have a policy referred to as Number 150.2, which says that if a property is within the city of Fayetteville's MIA, and if PWC water and sewer are requested or will be used, then the owner needs to submit an annexation petition. We got the petition on November 21st. Couple of issues. The sufficiency of the petition has been verified, and Brolanco is the owner. Services, city departments, and PWC divisions have reviewed it. No one has pointed out any problems. The area will be developed according to city standards. Budget impact, you see there in your memo, some information on that. Here's a little bit more. Fiscal impact analysis basically involves a comparison of projected revenues and costs. We made various assumptions about this area, basically that it would develop at a rate of about three units per month once development starts. And it appears to be very favorable for the city. So, the bottom line is that the revenues do exceed the cost, and we would recommend that you do annex the area. And we recommend that you make, make the ordinance effective tonight, January 9th.
Mr. Nash, let's just say this was not approved for annexation tonight. Would the, Mr., or John Broadwell, what was his option to be? Still build, but in county standards?
He could, I guess, since the city's regulations are only in effect for property within the city limits. But they actually thought that this was already annexed, I'm told, and it was discovered that it hadn't been, and then they brought the petition in. They've already submitted it through our development review process, and it has been approved.
No, I'm just trying to, trying to see where, say, if it was disapproved tonight, would they still receive PWC services?
Someone might want to step in here. I think that they could. I mean, it's your option to annex it or not.
Okay. Well, mine is, is that if we, if we don't annex it, and they still build the county standards, they still get PWC sewer and water. So, this is one of those ones to where... So, this is one of those ones to where, okay, I was just trying to get you to answer that they can still build even if we don't annex them to county standards, and how many years or decades or months down the road, if we annex them, then we have to retrofit everything?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chris?
You spoke of sufficiency. Does that translate to ownership? And the significant question is, are we absolutely certain every parcel in section four, five, and six belongs to Berlanko?
Well, at this point, the land has not been subdivided. It's all one parcel, and that makes it easy for this, checking the sufficiency. And it was checked as of 4:00 this afternoon or updated.
But no parcels have been sold yet to any prospective homeowner?
It's my understanding, sir, our real estate division checked it and determined that Berlanko is still the owner of the entire 53.6 acres.
And, Mr. Nash, you said it would be built to city standards. Does that mean current standards with regards to our UDO? And specifically, I'm asking about sidewalks, curbs, and gutters? Because I know in the existing portions of Fairfield Farm, they do not have sidewalks.
Well, it got its approval through their courtesy submitting it to us before the UDO had been adopted. And so, one could probably argue that they are approved to develop it according to the standards that were in effect then, as opposed to the UDO. That question hadn't really come up that way. It's a good one, but...
Straighten me out here, because you just confused me now. This is a request for annexation. You told me that the housing would be built to city standards, but now you tell me that the building permits were approved before we adopted our UDO?
Mr. Iman, jump in on this one. Mr. Iman?
The building permits have not been approved. The site plan for the subdivision has been approved, tentatively approved, preliminarily approved through the technical review committee, who reviews it for all, all codes. And so, it has been approved. At that time, it was prior to the adoption of the UDO.
So, we're back to my question. This development, sections four, five, and six, will probably be built without sidewalks. Is that right?
I would have to confer with somebody that sits on the technical review committee. Mr. Nash does not sit on that technical review committee.
Thank you, Mr. Nash.
Mr. Feller?
Do you know, did they give you an indication of what time they anticipate beginning development of land? Will it be immediately following annexation?
I don't think it'll be real soon. I'm assuming, we did assume perhaps April of this year, 2012, is when the streets would begin to get built, and they would start creating lots and perhaps grading the land. It will become the future lots along the time they're doing the street work.
And the responsibility for putting the sewer and water in will be the responsibility of the developers, correct?
Yes, sir, right.
Just concern, we have a large group of people on our side of town that were annexed and have to wait a long time for sewer, because the city's going to have to put it in. I just want to make sure it doesn't jeopardize or slow down their opportunity to have their sewer put in where they live.
I don't think it would, sir. It's already available from the part of Fairfield Farms that's already been built. It's just a simple extension, and...
Mr. Massey?
Mr. Nash, I'm going to carry Mr. Bates's position a little bit further. In the event that this did not pass tonight, would it also mean that the folks who were living, in other words, their only requirement is to petition for admittance? Is not, at this point, required that they be admitted in order to receive the lower city, city rates? Or would they then automatically revert back to the county rates for PWC water and sewer?
So, you're talking about the rates after it's built?
Yeah, this is an issue that Mr. Nash does not deal with regularly, and I've been involved with it throughout. The, the policy change that we have been discussing to address the issue as to whether or not the, the water and sewer will be available should the annexation not go through. That policy is slated for a work session of council on February 3rd, I believe, first Monday in February. And until such time, we have an agreement with PWC that they will not issue a contract for the installation of water and sewer until such time as council acts on the petition. So, if the council acts the night, tonight, and does not accept the annexation, the PWC will not issue a contract for, for installation of water and sewer utilities.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Yes, sir. Would there be a reason that we would not consider this voluntary annexation, a request for annexation to the city of an existing neighborhood? Would there be a reason that we would not do that? Are you just kind of technically looking for?
No, sir, I was just trying to get to that point, that if it is not annexed, they could still build.
Now, I think under the, what Mr. Iman just described, we're, we're working towards that addressing the issue you've talked about, but I, I think there's even an interim plan in place that would prevent that.
On the UDO, now, how long ago did they get permission or approve their site plan before the UDO came in effect? When did the UDO come in effect, and when did they submit their site plan? I mean, that's an awful long time ago.
Well, that, that's exactly what we've been encouraging, though, is to have site plans approved by the city before they apply for the annexation. That's, that's not unusual for the development to come into the city.
Not before the annexation. You said they submitted it before the UDO was approved.
That's correct. If you'll recall, we allowed a period of time for developers to bring forth projects, which would be developed, reviewed, rather, under the codes prior to the adoption of the UDO. So there was that period of time where developers had that option, and this particular developer in this particular situation opted for that, for that review at that time, prior to the development, the adoption, rather, of the UDO, which I think took place in August.
Do you know if there's any more that's going to sneak up on us when we think we have the UDO in place to address this, that next month, we're going to get told again, this one was submitted before we did anything with the UDO?
Yes, there were, there were other development, developments that took advantage of that opportunity. Not, not a significant number, but there are others out there that, that did do that.
Okay, because that was a long, long, hard, I won't say a battle, but that was a long process to get that UDO in place for these to keep popping up, or they did it before we was able to get that in place. That's just...
Mr. Mayor, and I don't understand the impede progress here, but understand, as that, as that area is developed and grows, I'm very familiar with Fairfield Farms right now. Hundreds of homes out there, and we're talking about another 108. And then further down Ramsey, there's going to be more development. At some point, we're going to have to put a school out there for kids, and we're going to end up retrofitting again, and that's the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other comments on this? I've already lost track. We didn't have the public hearing yet. Anything else for Mr. Nash while he's there? Good job, sir.
I could just add...
Stay by, close by.
School systems would be responsible for any new schools.
Okay, ma'am.
So, we only have one speaker in favor, Mr. Jimmy Kaiser.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's an interesting discussion for voluntary annexation, but I'll try to clear up some of the confusion that I think is happening with this thing. As Mr. Nash mentioned earlier, we really thought that this section of Fairfield Farms was already in the city, to be perfectly honest. They've been, the Berlanko's been developing out there for a very long time. And previous sections, we'd gone through city reviews, we'd, we'd been going through the process like it was with the city. We started this when we filed that preliminary plan back late last spring with the same thought process. And really, it didn't come up that we weren't into the city until we got to the PWC review, and they said, oh, by the way, it's not in the city. Well, I even called Berlanko, the Broadwells, and they were like, really? We hadn't annexed that in the city? So, we hadn't. And so, that's why we're here tonight. It's kind of one of those things that was, we all thought it'd already been done, and it hadn't been done. The, in response to your question, Mr. Chris, we do have a sidewalk out there, which was part of the previous standards, which was sidewalk on one side of the street. So there will be sidewalks in this section, just like they are in section three, which was the last section that they built out there. There are sidewalks out there as part of that. And what we have submitted up to this point meets all the city standards as far as the street section, 27-foot back-to-back curb and gutter with the sidewalk on one side of the street. The UDO would have it on both sides of the street, so that's the only nuance as far as that goes. Stormwater controls, we're putting ponds in out there like, like, like is required. So really, there's not a significant difference in what we're doing from the development standpoint with what's in the UDO. A few little nuances, but pretty much it would be meeting the city standards that were existing prior. The only thing that I could think of that would be a significant change, just because how we were, this thing was approved, would be some of the landscaping requirements with the individual houses, which are required with the UDO, and some of the nuances with the house plans. But most of those houses out there are built, built to suit anyway. They're not, you know, just built off the cuff. So, I don't think you're going to have a problem with that, and most of those houses out there are very nice houses with very nice landscaping. So I really think the character of what you'll see will be in keeping with the intent of the UDO by the time it's finished. I'll be happy to answer any questions if, if any of y'all have anything about the development or want any other clarification or...
Well, let's close the public hearing, and then we'll see if there are any questions, sir. How about that?
Thank you.
Okay, were there any other speakers, ma'am?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Now, we'll entertain questions from council for staff or Mr. Kaiser. Mr. Massey?
Thank you. Bottom line, with former councilman Jimmy Kaiser being a part of the process of dealing with this, with this work out there at Fairfield Farms, I am positive that it will meet city standards. In that context, I want to thank him for the effort that, that he has made, because he worked also very diligently, diligently on that UDO project. So he is keenly aware of those things that would be a positive for that overall project. And in that context, I want to thank him and, and the people that have worked with him to make these things happen, and I will be supporting the motion to annex that, that area.
You have a question, Mr. Bates, or is that a motion, Mr. Massey?
If it's time for a motion, you got it.
What were you, were you looking? Is that a question?
The date of 9 January?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from, and an appropriate second, Mr. Bates, that's the second, I guess, from you, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion for Mr. Massey. Any discussion on the motion? May I ask for your vote, please? That's unanimous, thank you. Good work, Mr. Nash, thank you tonight. Okay, council, we'll move now to item nine, which is 9.1, consideration of the rental action management program or ramp ordinance. Mr. Hewitt?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Again, good evening, mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight for council to provide direction to staff and possibly consider the rental action management program, ramp, and the accompanying ordinance that was in your agenda package. I have a short PowerPoint presentation that tracks closely on the PowerPoint presentation you saw last month during the public hearing as well. By way of background, the city has been working on ramp or some variant since 2007. On April 26th of last year, the city council actually adopted a similar program called PROP, which stands for Probationary Rental Occupancy Permit. But it was, but you repealed it on August 8th due to changes in North Carolina law. At the city council's direction, staff went back to the drawing board and looked for a program that was compliant with North Carolina law, as well as would have some of the same goals as the earlier PROP program. The program that staff put forward for the city council was RAMP, which again stands for Rental Action Management Program. It is based on a similar program in Charlotte, and again, it is compliant with North Carolina law. Both staff and the community have engaged, both staff and the council have engaged the community stakeholders in understanding what ramp is about. And most recently, as I said, the city council held a public hearing on December 12th, 2011, where I think almost 20 stakeholders came forward to talk about their concerns or interest in the ramp program. So again, what is ramp? Ramp is Rental Action Management Program. It is modeled after someone in Charlotte that seeks to reduce crime and social disorder as well as code violations at residential rental properties in the city. It is based on the belief that property owners can help influence the condition and the activities that occur on their property. And included in your packet is the actual ordinance for ramp, which I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about that. But also included in your package was a set of questions that the city council sent to staff following the December 12th public hearing, along with staff's responses to those. And again, I'll be happy to cover those in any detail you would like. Before moving next to talk about the ramp triggers, I would like to say again that if a person owns residential rental property in the city and their property is not the site of repeated code violations, which are listed in the ordinance, or the site of serious criminal activity as defined by the ordinance, then ramp in no way would have any impact on their properties or on their tenants. Ramp is designed, as was PROP, that unless you have code violations or criminal activity on your property, it will not impact you at all, so far as being, having been entered into the program or having to pay any type of registration fee. The slide on the screen actually, again, shows the two ways in which properties can enter. One is criminal activity, and the other is code violations. The first criteria for both is, is it a rental residential property? Under criminal activity, does the property fall in the top 10% of crime incidents using a weighted criteria as compared to similarly sized rental properties in the city? And it also requires, if you're entered into ramp, the development of an action plan to reduce crime and social disorder on your property. On the other side of the slide, under code violations, again, we ask the same question. Is the property a residential rental? If it is, and it has three or more code violations in a 12-month period, such as abandoned cars, trash and debris, damage to home and surrounding property, then it too could be eligible for entry into ramp. Once into ramp, there are a number of ways that properties can get out. For crime and social disorder, the criminal activity, if at the end of the six months that you're in ramp, if the crime and social disorder fall below the 10% threshold, you can be removed from ramp. But for code violations, you would be in ramp for one year. Further violations, either on the criminal activity side or the code violations, if satisfactory progress is not made according to the ordinance, then there is an opportunity for the city to restrict the owner's ability to receive rental income for up to a year. And again, I can go into much greater detail about that from the ordinance and the frequently asked questions included. As we provided last time, staff has done an analysis of looking at what we believe it would take so far as resources for us to run ramp, and the personnel requirements are the greatest cost. We're looking at one full-time housing inspector, a part-time office assistant, too, to work in our development services office, two full-time crime analysts to work in the police department, a sworn police officer, as well as a police sergeant. The program also requires two police cruisers, hardware and associated software as well to run. Looking at it from budget, we've developed a set of assumptions which are on the following slides. We believe that it's going to have one-time startup cost of over $242,000. Some of those activities or costs would be initial advertising, marketing and education, office setup, computers and software, again, the two police cruisers, offices, equipment, and safety gear, as well as training for personnel. The personnel and operating costs for a partial of FY12 would have been $186,837. That is somewhat outdated, as you'll see when we get to the last slide, when staff provides you with the recommendations. But that would also have covered cell phone, travel, training, supplies, and memberships, and things of that nature as well. and things of that nature as well. Some additional assumptions, we did not include some indirect costs. Indirect costs such as legal, I T, H R D, collections and finance. Some of those are really very difficult to capture so far as a cost because they would be based upon activity. And we do have a belief about the amount of activities you'll see on the upcoming slide. But also, similar to PROP, we did not include those indirect costs because in doing so, we're trying to make sure that the program is somewhat manageable so far as its initial startup cost and ongoing budget. But as those expenses became identified, those would be things that the staff would bring back to the council as part of your ongoing budget discussions as well. And again, the personnel cost for F Y thirteen, a full year, for running the program would be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Next set of assumptions really talks about anticipated revenues. We did not anticipate any revenues for the remainder of this fiscal year, primarily because we will be looking to set the program up as well as to establish a database. And looking at a full year of operation, we were anticipating that we would have a collection rate of about eighty percent instead of a hundred percent, as we had calculated earlier for PROP. And so what that looks like is if our assumptions hold, that we would have about one hundred and thirty homes that could be included in RAMP as it relates to code violations, and another hundred homes or rental, residential rentals that could be included as it relates to crime and social disorder. At eighty percent collection, that takes us to about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in revenue. As I shared, I think at our last meeting, if not then at one of the earlier workshops as well, there is a likelihood that some of the homes or residential rentals which would come into the program because of code enforcement violations would also be homes that may come into the program as it relates to crime and social disorder as well. And that's why, again, we wanted to make sure that we did not assume a hundred percent of the revenue because there very well could be some overlap there. And, but we do believe that there would be some revenues that could be generated from, would be generated from properties entering to RAMP, whether it's on code violation side or the crime and social disorder.
Mr. Hay, have a question, sir?
Yeah, I think I might be asking a little bit as you go along. I want to make sure I'm understanding from our last meeting to now, Doug, if a property owner does not meet the quota of violations, I'm understanding correctly that they will not be a part of this program?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, you just got finished stating and about the number of homes. Well, then what about registrations? Will any of those property owners, rental property owners, have to register? Or the only way, period, that they are ever in the program, either through violation quota or registration, is through the violation quotas?
Correct. So in order to pay a registration fee, RAMP fee, or any other fees that people may consider, I consider it a RAMP entry fee, but some people say it's a registration fee, and the ordinance is written, it says registration as well. Any way you would pay, the only way that you would pay anything related to RAMP would be if you were entering into the program because your property had three or more verified code violations as specified in the appendix of the ordinance in a twelve-month period, or your property on a six-month period had, six-month review, fell in the top ten percent of crime and social disorder for similarly situated properties for crimes on a weighted average as detailed in the ordinance. And so a person who owned rental property, who had two code violations in a twelve-month period, they would not pay a RAMP entry fee. They would not, nor would they have to enter into RAMP in any form or fashion, as the ordinance is currently written.
Okay. So I'm, what I'm then trying to understand, I guess I should have been asking it, but then the startup cost for this program is coming from the, I guess, the fund balance?
The city council, yes, sir. The city council, not the fund balance, but the general fund.
The general fund, okay. And if a property, if the rental folk have no violations, are you saying also then the city of Fayetteville will not know who they are in the city? That rental company or those rentals even exist unless they have these violations? Because I'm still trying to understand this, Regis.
No. One of the things that staff believes in order to affect this program is that we're going to have to create a database that is going to be able to tell us where we have rental properties in the city. That will be a shared cost that the general fund will have to assume for staff to work to create and maintain that database. That will not be offset, it will only be offset by people who enter into RAMP. But if a property does not enter into RAMP, then the general fund, which all of us contribute to through property taxes or whatever else, would be used to fund the ongoing cost for this program. There are, as I mentioned, two police cruisers that we're looking to purchase. That very well could be something that the manager could look at as part of our vehicle replacement or some other form of fashion. But the recommendation, I think at the end of the presentation, will give you some, will give staff an opportunity to provide better clarity as to where some of those expenses could be charged and how we might move forward. And that's on my last slide for recommendations.
And I appreciate it, and thank you, Mayor, because I had been explaining it differently, but now I understand.
Yes.
Because I was getting questions about it. Thank you.
Let's see. Again, some of the assumptions we have here, if we were looking at a partial first year or just, we'll say, a full year, you would have a certain number of expenses, as I mentioned earlier, that would be for the startup cost. But then the full-year cost would be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with an estimated one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in revenue. And again, a total general fund investment in the second year, when you fully start up, of about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. So it is a larger program than what we had for PROP. And so again, I'd be happy to cover any of the items in the, in the ordinance or the frequently asked questions that you might have.
Mr. Chris had a question, Mr.?
Mr. Hewitt, Mr. Omi, I brought up an interesting aspect, and he brought up the aspect of the military. The home next door to me was rented for five years while the owners were away. He was deployed and then schooled and what have you. Now, they didn't have any unruly pool parties at all. But if they had, how are we going to handle those military owners who rent their homes and they're gone because they're deployed or, you know, off to school, different things? What do we, what's the criteria here? And I didn't find anything about military in here. What are we doing?
Well, it's just like we would for any of the code violations that we have now for properties that are owned by military personnel who may be deployed or may be on active duty to station somewhere else, maybe stationed somewhere else but still maintain their home here in Fayetteville for rental. They're still ultimately responsible for the code violations which occur on their property. One of the things that I'm not as versed on, but I know that our legal staff can help me out on this as well, is there are provisions, federal laws, which dictate how cities, how you serve someone in a process. As sailor's relief, I'm always going to mess this up, and I know Karen is, yes, is kicking me as I'm saying that as well. But it does not mean that they're not responsible for the activities or for the civil processes. It just means that they may be held in abeyance, I believe, until they return and given an opportunity. But as PROP is, as RAMP is outlined, the goal would be that any member of, service member or property owner who no longer lives in the community but owns rental property here, that they would employ someone like Mr. Omi or his associates, who's a professional property manager, and would provide a local contact for us to be able to work with and deal with. That would be an ideal situation so that we could be responsive. But ultimately, what we have found, regrettably what we have found, is that that's not always the case, that people are always responsive, or they at least want us to go out, and we're repeatedly seeing some of the same people for code violations. It is not a perfect system, given this is a military community and the issues that you cited and Mr. Omi cites as well are real-world scenarios. But they are still ultimately responsible for the condition of their property as it relates to the code violations.
Yeah. I hear you, but, but see, this soldier's in Afghanistan, and there are three violations in a four-month period of time, loud parties, noise, fights. How are we going to handle that? How are you going to notify him, he's in Afghanistan, that he's got a problem in his house back here?
Right.
You see where I'm going with this?
I do.
And we got a lot of them like that now, that are being rented without putting those units under the control of property managers who would be able to handle that. And I can give you the case in point, the major that owns the house next to me, he handled that himself via mail, okay? So I don't know. I'm, and we've got a lot here in Fayetteville that are owned by military that are being rented out. And how are we going to contact them to say, you know, the guy's over there in Fallujah, not anymore, but somewhere over there in a crazy land, and we're sending him a letter saying, you're in violation of the city code?
Well, we do it already, Mr. Chris. That's what's so kind of surprising is that those are real-world issues that our staff and code enforcement deal with. And if adopted as presented, the crime and social disorder would also be one of those issues that we'd be dealing with as well. Ultimately, though, the property owners are responsible, at least we're trying to help them and get involved in that relationship between their tenants and the community at large. Clearly, as written, for the crime and social disorder, it requires that there be a mandatory meeting between the police officials and the property owner or their representative. If we start serving notice to the property owner and realize that he or she are deployed or are not able to be responsive to those requests and has not designated someone to handle their affairs in their absence, then that again would be something that we deal with on a daily basis and we'd work with the city attorney's office or whatever remedies we have. That is not all of the issues that we have in the community. But when those situations arise, particularly with our service members who are serving overseas and are not able to handle the day-to-day affairs like this, we would have to be sensitive to that as well. But that again is not the only situations in which we find ourselves. But clearly, the ordinance as drafted says that there has to be a mandatory meeting with them or their designate, and a plan has to be put in place. And so until that was done, then the property would still be eligible for RAMP, but they couldn't be entered until we had those items addressed.
I probably need to talk to you tomorrow, Ms. McDonald, because there are some federal guidelines here that preclude us from handling a soldier who's on the nation's business.
Yes, and Ms. McDonald corrected the title to that. She, she, her staff is aware and...
Okay. We got, do you have anything?
Definitely some of those issues.
Okay, Mr. Fowler?
Yes, Mr. Hewitt, two questions. One is, is there currently money in the budget for this startup cost?
Yes, sir, there is. The city council, not all of the two hundred and twenty-four thousand, but the city council did adopt as part of this budget, I believe it was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars approximately, that is available now in this year's budget for us to begin implementation of RAMP. And that's kind of what I was going with, with the recommendation as well. But, so yes, there is some money available for that.
All right. I want to give you, this was a hypothetical for me until the other day, when I received a call from one of my constituents. He has a home next door to him. It's not rented. It's vacant. Had a code violation, had a sticker put on the door five, over five months ago. Nothing was done. I asked him to call inspections again. He did. Inspectors came out, looked at it, cited him again, put another sticker on the door. The home is vacant, so it's not for rent. It's not owner-occupied. It could have another code violation, and another code violation, and another code violation, and another code violation, and that property owner wouldn't have to pay a thousand dollars. So we're telling somebody that is a property owner that rents a home, that if they have code violations, they have to pay a thousand dollars if they have three. But if we have an owner-occupied or a vacant home that has code violations, those people are scot-free.
That's correct. If the property is not offered for rent, whether it is vacant or tenant occupied, as long as it is offered or available for rent, it would be eligible for the RAMP program.
So is the, is the object to reduce the amount of crime, which gave me a third question, sorry, Mayor, I said two, and recruit, and to reduce code violations, or is it to only reduce it in rental properties? But that's, that's a rhetorical ques, that's a rhetorical question.
I like rhetorical questions, actually. The, this is not a panacea. This is not, this does not solve all of the issues that we have in the community. I think since two thousand and seven, there hasn't been a program that we've provided to the council that has answered all of the issues going on in rental properties. But what we do know is that since two thousand and seven, the calls from the citizens, community watch groups have not abated. We also know that the police department has consistently said they believe a program of some sort would be beneficial. Your senior staff believes some program would be beneficial. Now, whether this program is that beneficial program or not, that is really the council's determination. But clearly, doing nothing since two thousand and seven, the concerns from the community watch groups, the support from the police department and senior management haven't done anything. We are not going to be able to address all the concerns that we have with the service members. We're not addressing those now because, again, they're serving honorably, and we have to respect that. Clearly, you and I had had a conversation as well, sir, about that there is a disparity in some people's minds about residential properties on the same block, and the only difference is one is owner-occupied with ten code violations, and the other is tenant-occupied with three violations. And the tenant occupied has to go into RAMP, I mean, RAMP, but the owner-occupied does not. Again, those are things which is not a cure-all for all the conditions in the city and our housing stock. But again, it is better than doing nothing, and it is, it is a proactive step. But now, whether or not this program is that beneficial proactive step is council's, again, decision. But clearly, I don't think that the calls from the community watch groups, which have not been, have not lessened really since two thousand and seven, will go away unless we're able to identify something. Now, if this isn't that something, again, staff will take another look at it.
The last question, sorry, is because you mentioned that it's modeled after Charlotte. Do we have any concrete numbers on what happened in Charlotte? Or do we just have a, that got better?
Well, staff has had contacts with their staff counterparts, and the information that we've received back, and I don't know if that is in a written form that we have, that I've seen to share fully tonight, but yes, the feedback is that it is, it is a positive program.
That's an overall feeling. Are there any concrete numbers on crime reduction?
Again, I don't have those tonight, but when we met with them, everything that I heard from the police attorney and the staff suggested that it was a positive and that, and I know that I had requested some of the information, but I don't have that here with Ms. Part's presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Doug, on the criminal activity part, does Charlotte use the ten percent of?
No, Charlotte uses some lesser number than ten.
Why is ours different?
Well, one of the things that we were looking at when we were doing with PROP is that we really didn't have guidance from the general assembly about fully what was allowable and what wasn't. So in Senate Bill six eighty-three, the general assembly identified the ten percent, and that was the model that we went with. That, along with the number of code violations as well, but all of those things which can be dialed down at council's interest or direction. As I mentioned, I think, as, I know I mentioned this earlier about Charlotte's program as well, they had more properties that were eligible for their version of this program than they had staff to actually manage. And so based upon the numbers that I shared with you and the fact that we would be building a database, it very well could be that there are a number of properties in the first year, particularly on crime and social disorder, which we simply would not be able to get at. That does not mean that they're not eligible for RAMP as resources become available. But again, we're looking at the top ten percent, but if council chose to do...
What are those top ten percent? Do we know what those categories are?
Yes, sir. That's actually in Appendix A.
So those, in our community, those have been quantified to be the top ten percent?
Top ten percent of...
Criminal, of crime incidents.
What we did in determining the criminal incidents that you see in Appendix A, is we talked to the police department and asked, what are some of the crimes that they believe affect our rental housing stock more so than others? This also kind of tracks very closely to the criteria that is used in Charlotte as well, for things which we believe that background checks, safety and security, lighting, and some other things might be able to help us reduce crime and social disorder in some of those residential communities.
So the top, this kind of sounds like an official calculation, top ten percent of crime incidents, but it's more of subjective one, just the ones that they think are more impacted by rental property?
I'm sorry.
Is it, is it an objective measurement, or is it a subjective feeling about that one that are, would be subject to this?
Well, just looking at the, I'm not sure if I can answer a question about subjective or objective, but we did ask them what were their, the crimes which they felt should be included in the program, and these were the list they came up with, that really, if you... That really, if you look at the ones that I have, homicide, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, motor vehicles, physical assault, simple assault, narcotics activity, drunken disorderly, but this was the, the list that the police department rendered. So as to whether or not, from the objective standpoint, you mean that they went out and did a catalog of apartment communities and said, okay, what are we seeing out here more so than we're seeing anywhere else? I don't know that they did that. I think that this is the list of, of probably some of the most severe activity that we're seeing, not only in residential, not only in apartments or residential rentals, but also in residential and across the city in general.
I think Ms. Davey had a question to Mr. Fowler.
Yes, Doug, thank you for your presentation again. I just wanted to clarify again, as we've been working on a, a process like this for almost, over, almost five years, has there been a time that a stakeholder has been denied the right to participate in, in this program?
From, from my perspective, no. When we have met with the, starting back in 2007, some of the stakeholders have made suggestions that staff has reviewed, but were not part of the final recommendations that we made because we felt that they didn't, weren't necessarily consistent with them. But there's at no point in time, to my knowledge, been any stakeholder that has been denied an opportunity to talk, contact staff, council, or participate. And I think there's probably 10 to 12 public meetings that we've held as well.
And as you suggested about the Appendix A, which talks about the different crime, and as we look at the top 10% here in Fayetteville, would you suggest, or would you say that the top 10% is, is some things that we're hearing in the community, such as minor things, that would not be considered a top 10% crime analysis here in our community?
Well, yes, and, and Charlotte has a, a whole lot of things which they consider to be social disorder. Those were, and I don't have Charlotte's ordinance in front of me, but a couple of them were about people using the bathroom in public, that appeared to be a real big issue at some of their rental properties. That's not contained in our ordinance. It's not saying that we see that or don't see it, but that's not something that we felt was worthy of being measured by an incident. But, but your earlier question, I think, I'm glad you asked that because it jogged a thought for me. Some of the feedback we did receive on this going around with Ramp were that stakeholders were concerned about calls for service. And that was one of the unintended consequences that staff mentioned to the council earlier as well. Is this going to be a program that is going to disencourage people from calling the police department if they observe something they feel is suspicious? And so the police department, and Patricia Bradley and Brian Meyer, who's over here as well, the attorneys, out of the city attorney's office, worked to rewrite that element of the, of the ordinance to say, we're talking about incidents. So it's not just someone calls up and says, I believe there's prostitution going on over here, or calls up and says, I believe there's drug use going on over here. It really is that the police department has to go out and actually completes or compiles a report, an incident report. And so that is a, is a higher level of standard. So we, it, and we hope, along with the marketing efforts, if council adopts it, that we would do with the property managers, would not be a disincentive for them to call us at all if, if Ramp is, is put in place. And so there have been instances like that when we have been thoughtful about some of the comments that came in and tried to modify them. Some of the comments that also came in that were not reflected in here, Amir, some of the stakeholders were also concerned about the 10% that we're talking about versus Charlotte's. And I'd mentioned this is modeled after Charlotte's model. As included in your agenda package and city council action memo, Charlotte's model does not include code violations. Our model does track on code violations, which is allowed as a separate part of Senate Bill 683. Charlotte's model only focuses on crime and social disorder. So that is a departure from Charlotte's. But again, we feel it's consistent with council's direction from when we were reviewing and preparing Prop.
Mr. Fowler?
I'm glad you brought that last point up because that's where I wanted to go with this. I, I noticed that it seems to me that what I hear from most of the people I'm talking about, they're concerned about the crime and social disorder more than anything else when you listen to people in the communities. Yet we've thrown in code violations, and not only that, if it's a code violation, you're liable to be in the program longer than if you have the crime and disorder. The crime and disorder, you can be out of there in six months, but if you have code violations, you're going to be there a year, even if you took care of the code violations and everything else. If the object is the safety of our citizens, keep in mind, I'm just thinking of myself and my neighborhood. Fortunately, I don't, I don't have an issue in my neighborhood, which I've heard from other people. If I did, I'd be just jumping over the fence on this thing right now saying, let's go. Is that I would, I'd be much more concerned about crime and social disorder next to me than, you know, somebody's grasping too, too long or having some trash in their yard. I'm not trying to minimize those code violations. But we're given a, an easier task, if you will, or a shorter time period for people that, that have the thing that's the real problem that's going to, you know, could severely affect my family, the safety issue, over the code issue. I'm just curious why you came to a shorter time period.
Well, the crime and social disorder, if you're in Ramp, it is not only the cost of entry into the program and the registration fee, but it is also a significant piece of work for the property managers. It's not just you pay a fee, sign a paper, and then you come back in six months and hope that the crime and social disorder go down. You really have to, you have to develop a remedial action plan that is signed off by the police department, which specifies what you're going to do on a month-to-month basis. It, and then at the end of that six month, it does not, six months, it does not mean that you're coming out of the program, it just means that we will give you a review of, of your step, progress at that point in time. And if you have done all of the things that you said you were going to do as part of the remedial action manual, and able to document them, and the crime and social disorder falls below that threshold, then you can be removed from Ramp. If you're not removed from Ramp, you don't pay an additional fee for that remaining six months. The, additionally, let's say that you're in for the first six months and you get out for the second six months. At the 12-month mark, when we run this review again of all residential rental properties in the city by category, if your property falls again above that threshold, you're right back in Ramp and have to pay the fee as well. The code violations do not require a remedial action plan beyond saying, we're not going to have another code violation of this property in a 12-month span. That's really the difference there. And so in trying to describe the, the programs and the presentation as well as in ordinance, we do see that they are separate. One, again, the criminal, crime and social disorder or crime is more intensive, and then the code violations is equally important, but again, the goal there is just not to have any additional violations within a 12-month period. And that's the goal on that side. And so they are different, but they, again, both address concerns that we've heard in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, we've got three options tonight, correct, Mr. Hewitt? Option one is take no action. Option two is to approve staff's recommendation and move forward with an implementation date. And option three, if I recall, is to accept what's proposed and give further guidance. Is that an accurate statement?
The last one would be reject the ordinance as presented and provide, provide direction to staff as to how you'd like to proceed. And those were just, I guess, the standard ones. Take no action, reject, or accept.
I would, I would, I would make a motion that, that we take no action tonight, but provide direction to staff. And that direction would be direct the city staff to conduct additional research in regards to the remaining inquiries, some of which we heard tonight impacting the Ramp program, and bring their findings back to council on the 27th of February with a finalized implementation schedule and a total cost to include any cost avoidance calculations based on the implementation of Ramp.
Would you be willing to accept a modification that we would include consultation with the delegation, the state delegation, to see if they could perhaps give us any tools to help us with this? We've heard that, and I don't know that they've been consulted on this before.
I would, sir, that we would, um.
As part of that process?
As a part of that.
Yeah.
I would. Would you second that, Mr. Fowler?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion, February 27th? Is that a council meeting night? Assuming it is, it is? Okay. Any discussion? Ask for your vote, please. Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Chris, Mr. Shivani, Mr. Art, Ms. Davey, Mr. Hare, Mr. Massey, Mr. Fowler, in opposition, Mr. Bates, Ms. Sappelwhite, and Mr. Hirsch. Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.